Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, June 3rd at 6:05 PM, and I'm gonna call to order the Free Town Board of Selectment meeting. This meeting is being held in person as well as via Zoom. Present, I have myself in Selectment Loops. So I'm gonna start by saying that we've, we are gonna pass on the first two agenda items in executive session, and we're gonna move on to agenda item number three. Discussion and vote on whether to approve the meeting minutes from 5:14:24 and 5:21:24.
Did you say that it's being recorded?
Oh, I'm sorry, I might not have. I apologize, just in case. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on Town's YouTube page. Good catch, thank you. So, discussion and vote on whether to approve the meeting minutes from 5:14:24 and 5:21:24. So, we'll do them, everything's fine, so.
Likewise, the wish is there.
Alright, so with that, entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 5:14:24 and 5:21:24.
Motion is made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. Agenda item number four. Review annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for 6:30:24.
That's just there if there was any last minute changes, additions, subtractions, and I don't know that there are, but.
Yeah, I don't have anything, so I mean, I think we're good, so. I'm just, there's no vote to be called on that, so just move on from that. Agenda item number five. Discussion and vote to open review, finalize, and close annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for 6:30:24. But we don't need to because we didn't make any changes, so there's no vote to be had on that as well, so we're gonna move on beyond agenda item number five. Agenda item number six. Discussion and vote to approve the fiscal year '25 omnibus budget.
This is an updated budget with this school assessment changed. As you know, it's been sort of a moving target because of the state aid has changed, both with the transportation and chapter seventy-one. So they're, they've been updating their assessments as their changes come down from the state. So this budget, the only change in it is the school assessment, and so we made that change. The assessment actually went down. It's thirteen million, four hundred and eleven thousand and change for this total budget here. Thirty million, six hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. So we just need a formal vote for that.
Yeah, if it goes down, I'm all for it, it's tough to argue that one. So you're good with that one?
I am.
Alright. So, no more discussion on that. So with that, entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year '25 omnibus budget.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. And item number seven. Discussion and vote on whether to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Lola Furtado effective 7/124 through 6/30/27. So.
It's tough about this one.
She's a tough one.
Lola is an instrumental part of our, of the, this whole wheel and cog thing. It's, she's amazing, so.
Yep, and I couldn't agree more, honestly. She's that quiet backbone in our office, right? So, I can't thank her enough as well as these other two ladies, so. You know, beyond that, on a serious note, I did review the contract, and everything looks great, and no major changes, so.
Likewise, it's been great working with her for the past couple of years, and this is just, this is an easy agreement to get to.
Yeah, absolutely. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Lola Furtado effective 7/124 through 6/30/27.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Agenda item number eight. Discussion and vote on whether to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Patricia Roderick effective 7/124 through 6/30/27. Same thing, I don't have to work, I don't say have to, I, I don't work with her as much hand in hand, but you know, another instrumental part to the organization, to the town. So, you know, looked over the contract and very straightforward, and I know you were obviously involved in it, but.
Yes, we came to terms, and it's fair for both her and the town, so I think it's great moving forward. Another great employee at Town Hall, so great to have her.
Alright, so with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and Patricia Roderick effective 7/124 through 6/30/27.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. Agenda item number nine. Discussion and vote on whether to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and All States Construction, Inc. for a chip seal, various roads, stone seal, twenty percent rubberized asphalt, stone seals, asphalt shimming for a chip seal effective 7/124 through 6/30/25. We, didn't we already do something with this, was there, is this?
You awarded the bids for the roadway materials for this one and the next one.
Alright, there we go, that's what it was, I apologize, so.
Sounds like it could be turned into a song. Say it all fast. But no, yeah, this is straightforward, based on our previous discussions at, at Board of Selectment meetings. So this is good.
Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and All States Construction, Inc. for chip sealing various roads, stone seals, twenty percent rubberized asphalt, stone seals, asphalt shimming for a chip seal effective 7/124 through 6/30/25.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. Agenda item number ten. Discussion and vote on whether to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and K-5 Corporation for road striping effective 7/124 through 6/30/25. So this is the same thing as we just discussed with the previous one. So with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Free Town and K-5 Corporation for the road striping effective 7/124 through 6/30/25.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. Agenda item number eleven. Discussion and vote on whether to approve the road opening request from Eversource for twenty-four roundsville drive gas installation. So it looks like we had everything that we needed. They did give us a map on everything, with all the proposed work area and. Let's get this, yeah, I mean, it's a road crossing, but based on everything I've seen, it looks like we're good and we have everything we need. You don't have any issues with this one, do you?
No.
So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the road opening request from Eversource for twenty-four roundsville drive gas installation.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. Agenda item number twelve. Discussion and vote on approving issuing FreeTownMA.gov email addresses to Mary Beth Moore, Commissioner on Disabilities, and John Ashley III Boat Ramp Manager. So this is one of those procedural things that we have to vote on every time we issue out a new email address. So, you know, very straightforward, two different people who need emails in order to conduct their jobs, so, yeah, I think it'd be more straightforward than that.
Yeah, the only question I have is, is it gonna be individual emails or a group inbox email? Like inbox for the boat ramp and inbox for council disabilities?
There's only one email that's issued for the boat ramp, so that'll just be to the manager, and the commission on disabilities will be like COD. COD one, so they're generic.
Good, thank you.
Makes sense.
Perfect.
Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve issuing FreeTownMA.gov email addresses to Mary Beth Moore, Commissioner on Disabilities, and John Ashley III Boat Ramp Manager.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. Agenda item number thirteen. Discussion and vote on whether to approve the following transfer request. A, treasurer tax collector for four thousand five hundred dollars from health insurance stipends to union pensions. B, town accountant for eight thousand dollars from town insurance automobile to general liability town. And C, animal control for seventy-six dollars and sixteen cents for ACO assistant salary wages to additional gross overtime. D, town administration for eighteen hundred dollars from town administrator clerk, clerical, pot time salary wages to town administration, administrator, full time salary wages. I cannot get that one out apparently. And then E, town administrator for one thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents from town admin clerical part time salary wages to town admin executive assistant salary. Yeah, it's part of doing business and things, you think money needs to get moved around, and none of it seems out of the ordinary.
Right, so it's a yearly, yearly discussion, so.
Yep, yeah, unfortunately, they can't be perfect with this stuff, so. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the transfer request as read A through E.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. Agenda item number fourteen. Discussion and vote on whether or not to recommend the forensic audit of the school budget, so.
So yeah, this is a request that came from the chair of the Regional FinCom. I've included the email where, because of what's been going on with the school budget and the, I believe, the turnover within the administration department, having a fairly new superintendent. The Regional FinCom has thought that they would like to have a forensic audit on the budget, you know, given all of the discrepancies and whatnot. So this was a request from them to ask the Board of Selectmen if they would recommend having this forensic audit. I'm just reading to make sure I'm wording it correctly. Consider, um, yeah. To just see, yeah, so it's just sort of a recommendation. If the Board of Selectmen will recommend back to the school committee to have a forensic audit or an audit of the financial.
Yeah, I mean, if it helps their, their procedures and understanding, right? Sometimes it's an educational thing, so I'm not, not opposed to it. I guess who's funding it, because that, this stuff tends to.
I think that would be the further, you know, a further discussion. I believe the recommendation has to, this, well, there's some question about who has to recommend it. I believe the school committee has to approve having the audit, forensic audit, and so it, they would have to fund it. So they'd probably come back to the towns for, you know, half and half. I don't know that, though, that hasn't been discussed.
That was one of my questions, who's gonna, I'm all for the forensic audit, because like they said, they desire determined to understand the full scope of the issue, improve the process to prevent similar recurrences for the future. So I couldn't say it better. We, this can't continue to happen, and kind of shuffling things around as proposed will just compound the issue for the years down the road. As far as who's paying for it, I would like to know that as well. I definitely agree about putting it on a future agenda as a yes, because it definitely needs to be looked into. But I'd like to know who pays for it, and also, how do we fix that procedure moving forward? Is that changing the school agreement, the district agreement, to allow the towns to request it? So we don't have to go through the school committee? It's also something we should probably put on our agenda.
Well, I'm assuming it's because it's a district, it's not that simple, right? It has to go, it would have to come through both towns, and really, they're kind of, they're on their own island, as we very well know, right? So I don't know what the procedures would be for that. So that, that, and I think it's a very valid point, but I don't know that we're gonna get to that anytime soon, but I do, I don't see a downside to this short of all of a sudden them saying some ridiculous figure to complete it, and then, you know, but I don't see that as happening either, so. You know, I'm, I'm all for recommending this and, you know, seeing what the next steps are. And I mean, I guess it would, I guess we could recommend it and just say that, you know, we're also really curious about the amount of money as well as time that it would take. And, and time really is irrelevant in one sense, but I say that because of, I think of, we're, we're trying to do this for educational purposes, right? And is it gonna take two years? And then by that point, they're gonna be a much more well-oiled machine? I don't know. Regardless, I still would say I would wanna see it done, but I'm just curious for my own selfishness.
Because of all the errors, and the Regional FinCom didn't feel like they had any faith in the numbers coming out of the, the school because of the errors that, there were so many of them.
Right, and to chop it up to clerical errors, doesn't sit well with me, and I'm sure nobody else as well. So getting some answers is what we need, and answers we will get. And if this is the first step of many, then let's do it, so.
Yeah, alright, so I mean, it's, it's pretty simple at that point, then. So with that, I will entertain a motion that we recommend a forensic audit of the school budget.
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. I'm gonna kick it over to you.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
On the two agenda items for personnel board, since we don't have selectmen Matthews as well, we might need to table these for the next one, because you can't vote for yourself.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, to you.
Yeah, no, I, I was just gonna recommend that, because there's, he and I can't vote, and it wouldn't be right to just say, Trevor, you're it. Well, coming back from where he is, so. That said, we'll table the discussion on agenda items fifteen and sixteen till a further meeting.
Alright, so.
Back to you.
That was, that was a tough one for you, buddy. So, agenda item number seventeen. Discussion and vote on whether to add additional signs regarding no pets at ball fields. So, this one is, is actually weighed on me a little bit, because I get it from the ball field standpoint, but I also think of it as open space where people do go to exercise their pets. And I unfortunately know where this is going in that people are allowing their dogs to go to the bathrooms on the fields, they're not cleaning up after themselves, they're allowing dogs to run freely while kids are there. So I, I don't wanna lump every pet owner into that group, right? So I have a hard time, and listen, we can put up signs. We, we've, if there's nothing we haven't learned, is there's a lot of signs around this town that do absolutely nothing. A sign is just that. So it's like enforcing it is the other issue, so we can, you know, and then I don't want people trying to have to like self-police, well, there's a, you know, there's a sign that says no pets allowed.
Well, I think for this one, I think it was an update to the current signs. So the current sign on some of the fields says no dogs allowed. Well, of course, that runs into ADA Act for service animals, because they're dogs, right? Different from a pet. But I think this is more of a conversation of just updating the current sign that's been there, gosh, twenty plus years, to a more up to date sign that says no pets allowed. And that way, it can, if needed, it can be enforced versus not having it, something happening, whether it's an unruly dog, cat, peacock, whatever it is, right? And now, they, they can enforce it if needed, versus let's say a dog's barking or behaving in an inappropriate manner, then I guess individuals like to say, hey, there's no dog, no pets allowed. In that way, it's easy to enforce versus, I don't think the intent is to say no to pets. I think we all, we're all pet owners, and I think the, the idea is to, one, update the sign, signs, I should say, and two, in the event it is needed, you can enforce something that's not there. Alright, so.
Yeah, I guess I didn't realize that there was even signs there at the beginning, because, which is kind of against the fact that we have a spot where we have bags for people to pick up their, their stuff from their dogs. So we can't say, you can't have your pet here, but oh, he has a bag to pick up after it.
Right.
So.
And that's a separate, and not to get us a separate issue, there are bylaws saying that you must pick up your dog feces after the fact, right? And there are enforceable signs for that as well, according to the ACL. But this one, I think, is just really to update the current signs and, and in the event it is needed, right? I see, I see dogs on fields all the time, across the, across the entire town. Again, I, I think it's better to have it than not, right? I don't think anybody out there going, hey, you're a four-legged creature.
So right now, there is signs at all three?
There is a sign definitely at Central Park that says no dogs allowed. I believe the one at KRR, something there, I think it's mostly for the feces or not the dogs themselves, because we do have dog bags there. Unsure of the football fields, I know, do we have anything at the boat ramp? I don't think we have anything there.
There was the, it just say no dogs, I believe, on a sign, and the dog bags were taken down as part of the revamp. I'm not sure, it would be your discretion if it was going back up or not, I guess.
So, so right now, the only sign that I know exists is definitely at Central Park. Can't think of what the other ones say at this point. But again, this is just an update to no pets versus no dogs. And that one's, from the sign, looking at that sign next to the, where the handicap thing is, where we just repaved, it's outdated, it's sun bleached, it's, you can barely see what it says. This is just an update to that sign, so.
Yeah, I just don't wanna discriminate again, I, I mean, I guess I'm, you know, I'm trying to see it from both sides, because like I said, I, I get the ball field side, when people are taking pride in it, and then people are disrespecting it.
Yeah, nothing like sliding it the third with a shoe full of feces, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I can understand that, so that's, that's a statement I never thought I would hear, but.
Honest assessment of the situation.
Yeah, so I would say I'm okay with it as long as we're replacing existing signs.
Yes.
Okay, so that way we're not changing a policy.
Correct, I agree with that. This is just, my request is just a new sign that says no, no pets versus no dogs.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be handled the same way, it's up to the people there to address.
Yeah, and I guess I, because I just don't want people that, that are there as part of trying to self-police it, right? Where they're gonna think that because it's a sign that they can tell, you know, like, and I don't think that that's what's gonna happen, but you just never know, and I usually try to be glass half full, but sometimes I can be glass half empty, so.
As a pet owner, I, I understand both sides of the equation there, but.
Because this is something that's funny, like, we've talked about this a couple of times, is the whole idea of having like a central spot for people to take their dogs and have a dog park, right? So it's like, we don't have something like that, so. Especially KRR where there's a good-sized field that's unused on the backside right now. You know, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of people over there that run their dogs in that area, and they're out of the way, so you, if you put up a sign, theoretically, they're breaking a rule, and usually it's the, the good people are the ones who tend to follow that stuff. The person who doesn't care is gonna do it regardless if there's a sign there or whoever's there, and they're gonna be the ones who don't pick up after their pets, so. I, I guess what, what sparked this, like, that? Do we have someone that said something that was like, that it would came up?
No, it, it came up during a discussion with the baseball board. They were asking, hey, we're gonna change our signs. And instead of them changing on their own, it was like, hey, this is town property, let's, let's contact the ACL and see what she has to say about it. And she made the, discussion with her, the recommendation was made, it's just changing the sign from no dogs to no pets to keep in mind the ADA compliance requirements for service animals, which can be dogs, miniature horses, who you name it. So couldn't say dogs or animals, so we just say pets, because pets is not a, an ADA anything. It's just a pets there for your love, back and forth love, wet noses and everything else, but not for public assumptions, because you have a dog, it's meaning I have to like your dog. In that sense, that's how you look at it. But we do love dogs, so it's a hard, it's a hard one.
I just have a hard time with if this sign adds policing to it and gives someone the idea that they can't be there with their pet.
I think the intents on the actual fields themselves, like, I know from going to KRR, people put like all these weird obstacles to like lock the dog in the field. And then dogs run around happily as can be, tails wagging and everything else. Maybe they have a little number two, and then it's forgotten about, and then now, now you have players and everything else. Not to mention, those fields are often being insecticide, fertilizer and everything else, so we also don't want the poor little thing to get sick or anything from ingesting any pellets or anything, like, of course, there's always signs up, but like, we know for signs, some people read them, some people don't, so we're just trying to make sure of that. Again, I, I think it's just updating the sign and just in case it's needed and enforced.
Yeah, no, I guess, like, because I keep going back to, is I feel like all we're gonna do is hurt the good person, and the bad person's still not gonna get. The, the, the pet owner who doesn't listen to the signs, that is gonna trespass, even if they're being told that this is trespassing, they're gonna, you know.
I think when it says, it's pretty basic, it just has a, the current one just has, I believe, it's greenish in that old, that color, greenish color circle, has a picture of a dog, and it says no dogs allowed. That's all it says, nothing about any MGLs or any town bylaws. Now, the one that the ACL recommended for feces, right? Pick up after your dog, that one does have bylaws encoded into it for enforcement with the, the listing of fines associated with it. I think the first fines, like a hundred dollars if you don't pick up your feces, only up to five hundred dollars, up into, I believe, even additional fines or whatever enforcement she has. So this one's just basically a update to the sign, that's how I'm looking at it, so.
I know, I shouldn't be thinking this hard over something, but I just always think like the flip side of the coin.
Oh, no, you're gonna get the, you're gonna get the visuals that are gonna be upset about, you know, their perception of, oh, I can't, we can't bring my dog, and that's, that's not what they're, this is saying. This is just saying really is, stay off the fields during, especially during the, during the season. You know, like you said, there's plenty of fields out there that people run around it, but when you have football and definitely baseball as well, discussing the same thing regarding feces on the fields, you know, unfortunately.
And I guess, but I guess once again, I just keep going back to, that's not gonna change with the sign. So we're not gonna accomplish anything except for we're gonna hurt the person who goes there to, you know, walk their dog, to, to run their dog, that if they see their dog going to the bathroom, is gonna pick up after it.
But if they didn't have it needed, if there's no sign, we can't enforce anything down the road.
Yeah.
So, especially those habitual folks that leave the dog bags behind. That's half the battle, getting in the bags is part one, throwing it out is part two. Whether that goes in your trunk or, or backseat, that's up to you, but it doesn't be addressed. And the only way to do it is, unfortunately, a darn sign, just like we have here at schools about no trespassing from dust till dawn, or dust, dawn to dusk, whatever it says.
And you'll still see those.
Yeah, you'll still, absolutely, you'll still see them, but you can't enforce unless something's there physically to.
But we're seeing there's already a sign.
Correct, there's already one there, so. At the very minimum, one field has a sign already, so I can't think of the others. There's so many signs around town that, you kind of forget it.
Alright, I just don't wanna, I've been thinking about this one, and I feel like it's, it shouldn't be this complicated to think over, but I don't wanna make a rash decision and then regret it, so. I'm just, I apologize for this, but I'm just gonna table this one for now, because I don't have a third person here to try and weigh in on it, and so.
The sign's still there.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah. So, agenda item number eighteen. Attend town meeting and not return to open session, so. So I gotta adjourn the meeting, alright?
Yeah, you can adjourn the meeting.
Alright, so.
Or you assign.
Yeah.
Yeah, open meeting law does not apply to town meeting.
Yeah, I remember that we had, you still like call all at the end of the meeting and like do it, and then they were like, no, we don't have to. I should remember that. So, you wanna just have calls on?
Yeah, he gets it right.
The other thing I'm jealous of is that you're in short sleeves.
Three copies of All States. So, yeah, it was cool when we got here, but then I should add more people.
You know, I think, I think it's computerized and it shuts off at the end of the day, it's physical.
When I looked at my calendar from last year, I made notes, I guess. Apparently I made a note during the meeting and said, wear cooler clothing. And when it popped in my calendar yesterday, and I was like, I gotta be sure these are ironed.
These are your transfer requests.
I saw him on my way in, he's him and his wife are coming to the meeting.
There you go, he's got the key.
Oh, Greg, yes.
So these are all your transfer requests. There you go.
Our photographer, yeah, he's gonna buy.
Sticking the letter on ya.
I think it's gonna help. I don't know about that. Good theory, you know? I think it might, may not be the case.
A lot of thermal, a lot of thermal protection.
Thermogenics.
A lot of thermal protection in my body.
Sticking the other one in.
Oh, it's weird, is this, I think it might just be, there's an arrow in that, yeah, but it's just off in there.
Okay, let me see, let me just grab that from ya. Get one in, turn this issue, you did this one, you did this one, you did that one. I think, yeah, that's just pointing out, some language in the contract, so you are good. If you sign those, we'll bring them over to Margaret. Do you wanna bring these to Margaret?
Is she going to have them?
Yeah, they had them on their agenda too, so she said she'd walk over and do a signature. Yeah, they had them on their agenda too, so, she said she'd walk over and do a signature, so I said, okay, I'll take care of it. That's it.
You got it.
There you go.
Those to Margaret.
So with that, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.